All right, six o'clock, so we can bring this meeting to order just to remind everyone that this is being recorded by our local cable TV area 58. So the only thing on our agenda tonight is the meetings with potential town council, and we have a meeting here with Clifford and Kenny. So I think the best way to start would be to ask you folks to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be town council for Halifax.
Sure. Thank you very much. My name is John Clifford. With me is my partner Jamie Kenny, and Chris Kenny, one of our associates. We are a South Shore firm. My background was, I was a town administrator for 13 years, five years in East Bridgewater and eight years in Marshfield. In 2007, I started the firm as a sole practitioner, and we had, I had, I don't know why it was "we," it was just me at the time, but I had five clients. In 2013, I went into partnership with Jamie. I knew Jamie. Jamie was a union attorney who had really extensive litigation experience. And the thing, the reason that we went into partnership right away is because we really had a shared vision of what good municipal council service should look like. Right now, we have, we're representing, doing work regularly in 30 cities and towns. We have six associates in addition to Jamie and myself as partners, five other associates in addition to Chris. We've been very careful, very selective in how we grow. We are only town council in East Bridgewater and Rockland. We very rarely bid to become town council. We're labor council. That's really the bulk of our business. And we're selective in taking town council opportunities because candidly, some of the town council firms that we work with get completely overburdened, completely stressed out in spring. That's when you folks are at your business. And we never wanted to bid on town council services and put ourselves in a position where we weren't taking care of new clients the way we should, or we weren't taking care of existing clients the way we should. So the labor council work is generally much more spread out, so it's much easier to manage. One of the challenges with taking on town council work is because you have to know a little bit or a fair amount about so many different subjects. And that was one of the reasons that we were reluctant to take on new towns as town council, because we really wanted to develop the bench. Chris has been doing general council work in Rockland and East Bridgewater now for many years. Chris does all the land use work in East Bridgewater. And we've also got other associates who have really come up to speed on some of the general town council issues. But it was really a question of just developing the bandwidth, the capacity to take on general town council work. The reason we went into partnership because Jamie and I did share a vision. I mean, there were a few things that we really, well, as a town administrator, you know, I can relate to what people in Cody's line of work deal with. I felt like when you called attorneys, either A, they didn't get back to you quickly enough, or B, they gave you non-answers that I found very frustrating. When you call your town council or your labor council, what you're looking for is, you know, tell me what I should do, work with me, come up with a plan that we can implement that will solve the issue. The thing I'll say, and Jamie's going to speak to the philosophy in a little bit more detail, the thing is, in our clients, whether they're labor or general town council, we minimize litigation, all right? Litigation is what drives your budget. We can't prevent people from suing you folks, all right? But what we can do is really minimize the avoidable litigation and give you good advice upfront, work with your department heads, develop best practices, and then that cuts way down on the litigation. And that's really, and that's the experience that our other clients have found.
Yeah, and I will say this. First of all, we are a South Shore firm, as John said, and we pride ourselves on doing great work in this area. We represent almost a majority of the Plymouth County towns at this point for labor. And as John said, we're often asked in many of the towns that we are labor council to do town council work. And we've always taken this really very limited approach to that because, number one, we wanted to make sure that we had the capacity to do it, but also, number two, because we're just selective in general, even with our labor council work. We're not looking for work, and then that also goes through our philosophy with respect to our overall strategy. We're not grinding cases. We're not out there trying to make more billable work. That is not how we approach things at all. And that's really important for us. What I saw in the unions at the table over and over and over again was a lack of understanding, basic understanding about industrial relations, labor relations, 150E, which is the statutory obligations for public employees, and then 151B, which is the discrimination harassment pieces. And we've prided ourselves on really having this approach to be of service and to train and empower your leaders and be of service to all of you and be of service to them and get them to the point where they feel really comfortable and confident when they are dealing with any employee matters and support your support staff, your chiefs, your, you know, police chief, your fire chief, your department heads, Cody, all of you, in a way that really makes sense and is very proactive in terms of strategy so that you'll have those tools and talking points to, when you're in the grocery store and someone comes up to you and they want to complain about working conditions in the town, for example, or they have some, you know, personal gripe at work, how to redirect that conversation back to the agreed-upon practices to get dispute resolution. So how to help you all to understand your roles as select board members and help them understand their roles as union members, because the majority of your employees are union employees. So that's really the strategy. I'd go to the table all the time when I was a union attorney. I was a chief negotiator at 25 years old, and I would often find there would be a complaint at the table, and I would be like, that is a management problem, that is not a union problem. So I really wanted to make a difference and really help train the next generation of great leaders and enhance the leaders that we have in the municipal sector to really understand and know a lot of the basic concepts so that they're confident and comfortable in making those decisions. As John said, Chris does the land use. He's been with us now, obviously, since almost immediately after we partnered, which is coming up in 12, 12 years very soon. But we are always new council, so we're, we compete against firms that are over 100 years old oftentimes. And we are always the new kids on the block, right? So we're going to have, I know this is a transition time for you all, we're going to support you in the way that makes sense for you and makes sense for us if you choose us, to make sure that we have that smooth transition, because we're always, we're always new. Very rarely are we coming in to some, to a brand-new organization. We are with the regional dispatches that we represent because they're new entities, but every other time, we're kind of taking on some of the existing practices or what's already been done by other prior town councils. So we've done it 32 times, and we'll be able to hopefully work with your team to make sure that you have a seamless transition if that's one of your concerns.
Chris, you want to talk?
Sure. So Chris Kenny, Clifford Kenny, I think as mentioned, I've been with the firm for over 10 years doing town council. Work for East Bridgewater in Rockland, and we also assist some of our other towns here and there that we have for employment law. Sometimes they reach out and ask for addition, you know, town council service as well. Prior to working the firm, I was associate general counsel for the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office, and I was also, I lived in Marshfield, I was also on the Marshfield Conservation Commission. So I personally do a lot of the town council work and work directly with the town administrators in East Bridgewater, Charlie Seelig, and in Rockland, Douglas Lapp, and obviously with all the town departments. We assist with everyday issues, including but not included, including but not limited to procurement, contract review, public records, requests and appeals, open meeting law issues and/or complaints, zoning appeals in land court and superior court, as well as appeals of other board decisions, street acceptances, proposed general and zoning bylaw amendments, any type of hearing, indoor litigation, obviously also town meetings. I think it might have been mentioned, but we do offer trainings as well. One of the, one of the big things we do is open meeting law and public records trainings. We also offer other trains, but for everyone. And I think that's especially important for a lot of these boards there, and you get so many boards that are volunteer boards. You got people, you know, you always, I don't know, when I was in conservation commission in Marshfield, we could never, you know, we never had a full board, ever. It was just, you know, it's a volunteer board, and we had a lot of turnover. And you constantly have new people coming in and out, and, you know, most of them don't know the open meeting law. They don't know the public, you know, they don't know, one of their emails is a public record, whether it's on their town email or a person name. If you're talking town business, it's a public record. You got to turn that over, you know, if there's a request. So we do, that's, you know, especially for those type, you know, I think it's important probably for the whole town, but especially for those type of boards, I think it can be really helpful because a lot of times these people come in, oh, wow, you know, I didn't know that, just to make them aware of, to make sure that they're complying with the law. Our approach is, we're basically, we're there for the town and various boards and departments whenever you need us and whatever you need us for. Of course, we're proactive with advisories and updates in the law and the trainings, but I think as mentioned before, we're not a firm that's going to come in and bill a bunch of unnecessary hours for work that, you know, some boards or departments can handle on their own. And I think this has been mentioned as well, in terms of our availability, even in non-invertencies, we're always available. Our firms, as mentioned, we have eight attorneys, so even if, you know, one or even if some of us are out of the office or on vacation, there's always somewhere, someone at the office that can assist you. And we're always, I would say, always reachable via cell phone. In terms of some of the work we've done in the past with some of our clients, we've dealt with some very complicated land use and infrastructure issues in the past as well as currently. Just a few examples, I'm not sure if you're all familiar with the Hanson Land in East Bridgewater, which was an old map from the 1880s. It was over 100 acres of land, and it was about 2,000 individual train lots in East Bridgewater that, for a long time, were collecting minimal, if any, property taxes and had been a problem for a great number of years. The town later was sued via an adverse possession claim for majority of the land, but we ended up settling that matter and auctioning off the majority of that land, which resulted in the town receiving millions of dollars, not only from the auction, but from the eventual development and property taxes from the land that was sold by the town at auction. Another current complicated ongoing project in East Bridgewater is development of a sewer line for sewer capacity for, to a portion of the town. I just finalized all easements and land acquisitions needed to gain access for a landlocked town parcel and also to put the sewer line in, which would provide sewer service to the north section of town and provide potential commercial development and revenue for taxation for the town. As well, currently, East Bridgewater just received a 40B application, and we've started the public hearings with that, and of course assisting the ZDA and the town with the 40B process, which is, I'm sure you know, is, can be a very tedious and long process. In Rockland, we're dealing with a very, Rockland has a large sewer system, but it's an aging, older, much older system. Currently assisting them needs major renovation and rehabilitation. We've been working with the town EPA to stay in compliance with their sewage treatment permit and try to reduce their influence, infiltration. And finally, I think I mentioned more about street acceptances. I'm not sure if you've had issues in Halifax with old streets not being accepted as public ways, but I know it's been problematic for some other towns. But when we took over as town council in East Bridgewater, the town had a large number of older streets and subdivisions that had basically stalled, and the streets were never accepted public ways. These older streets began to fall into disarray and need significant repairs, and the residents were coming to town hall like, are my, there's holes in my street, and the town, you know. And of course, not being accepted as public ways, they're still technically private ways, and, you know, the only thing the town can do is do the temporary Band-Aids on some of the statutes you can accept to do the temporary Band-Aids, but you can't redo the whole street. So what we did, we worked with the town and we drafted special legislation for the town, which was passed by the legislature, which allowed the town to accept streets from a recorded subdivision and via town meeting, just get them accepted as a public way. And we could use the old subdivision plan without having to get a whole new road as built, engineering plans, which basically saved the town hundreds of thousands of dollars if, you know, without that special legislation. We have a really good relationship with East Bridgewater and Rockland Select Boards and the town administrators, and certainly encourage you to reach out to them about us if you haven't done so, and you can certainly answer any questions if you all have.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing we always encourage our clients, to talk to other folks who use us, because we are different. I've said that since we started the firm. We approach things differently in terms of how we try to be of service to our clients and really train and provide clarity and guidance and take strategic approaches to a lot of these issues that you face as a municipality. So we always say, please call our other clients. We don't do any advertising. Our firm has grown literally just by word of mouth. And, you know, I think we've picked up two or three towns just already this year. So, you know, we are a growing firm, and, you know, we think you guys would be a good fit for us, and we would like to be a good fit for you.
You know, we really, we're not going to give a long presentation. We've really, this is really wrapping up. We'd like to hear from you folks what you think we need, but I did want to follow up. Chris talked about the Hanson Land Company, and that's the property that was across the street from the Riddick Golf Course, and all the undeveloped land out behind that convenience store in the corner of Route 27, and it would go all the way up Central Street in East Bridgewater. That was so many acres of good, solid upland that could not be developed. And a number of firms worked on that over the course of decades and couldn't untangle what was really a pretty complicated mess. And, you know, the bulk of the work was done by Chris, a lot of the people, the assessor at East Bridgewater, but, you know, that was a real problem the town couldn't solve. And if you drive by there now, you see residential development going up Central Street, you see commercial development going up on Oak Street near, written near the golf course. You know, that's a success. And we really do pride ourselves on responsiveness. Mr. Seelig was put in touch with me several months ago when there were some issues here in town. And the approach that, that I think we used was sitting down with you and your team, talking about what are the issues, coming up with sound, practical guidance to get you through the challenges to fix things. And that's really what we like to do. We take great pride in that. So happy to answer any questions.
Team, John. It's a team of one. No, we had some good help. We were, we were okay. Well, I'm just curious, as far as being president of your communities, how often are you in your communities as opposed to, and we're in a Zoom world now. How, what's your percentage, would you say, to Zoom and in-person? And are those visits, I mean, we'd love to see our council all the time, but, you know, you have that feeling that the clock's running, you know? How are those visits handled with you guys both in-person, Zoom, and I guess in-lives too?
So the good news is that because you're so close physically to our office, you're not getting billed for travel time as you would with other places where you're looking at 45 minutes to an hour on travel time. We do like to come out and be in-person when we can, and it makes sense for everybody. But if your legal budget is not supporting that, then we can obviously pivot. I personally feel with a lot of issues, especially employee issues, it's very important to be in the room and to be able to feel the, feel the emotions in the room potentially and really handle things face-to-face. But again, it's going to depend on, we're going to take our, we're going to take our cues from you all. And all, as you can imagine, with 32 cities and towns, everybody has different approaches. But we do like to be in-person to the degree that we're able, because it's just much more effective. You can have five Zoom meetings, and half the people are on their phones, they're not paying attention, so really, you're, you're cutting down on travel time, but to get to an agreement, to get to yes, or to get to resolution, it's that much longer a lot of the times. So we prefer to be in-person when it's practical, when it makes sense. But again, we're never going to impose that on you. We're going to take our cues from you all.
Well, the general town council work, and it really, you know, it starts peaking in January, and it doesn't tail off again until after you get through your town meeting. And our experience, mainly in Rockland and East Bridgewater, you know, candidly, months will go by without them calling and saying, we need you to go to a meeting. That's fine, all right? But, you know, especially beginning in January, they, they want us there. You know, they're meeting with key people to talk about, you know, the warrant, to talk about any pressing issues. Chris has gone, has been at some meetings. We're going to bring forward the W, the MBTA zoning in East Bridgewater, and, you know, that's when you need us. But it's really driven by you. But this, the flat fee agreement, the flat fee proposal that we have, that's where this really comes in handy for town council. So for the flat fee that we've quoted you, you can call or email as much as you want. And that means if it's a fairly simple procurement question that the town administrator has, he picks up the phone and calls, Chris, David does a lot of work in our office on procurement, you don't get billed extra for it, all right? If it's a simple email question, you send us an email, we respond. If there's something serious going on, you know, it, and it doesn't happen that often, but when there's a crisis going on, you know, mainly Jamie or I, we'll get calls from all the board members on a regular basis, and that includes nights and weekends, and you don't see charges for every phone call. It's covered under the flat fee agreement. But, you know, for the simple, quick things in a lot of the town council stuff is that, all right? It's public record stuff. Chris has developed a great set of templates for response to public records things, which, you know, the public records law, the legislature hasn't done us any favors with that, created a lot of burden, but we try to minimize it. You know, there are no public records questions that we haven't dealt with before. So if one of your, you know, if your, you know, public records officer is overwhelmed by something, or the police department or whatever they call us, we give them a quick answer, we send a template, and that allows them to stay in compliance and take care of it fairly quickly.
We try to be really proactive, though, with just even the onboarding of new, like Chris said, with onboarding new select board members and new committee members to make sure that they really understand their roles and responsibilities and legal obligations, because again, the idea is the more they know, the more you can empower them, the easier it's going to be for them in their own minds to really be able to navigate some of this statutory, we have a really, a very complicated statutory scheme that we work under as a municipality, and it's even more complicated when you become, again, union and, and individual employee claims. So, you know, no one ever calls town hall when things are going well, no one's ever calling you, and, no one ever just picks up the phone and says, you know what, it's going great today, right? So we understand that you all are being pressed and challenged in a way, and our job is to help support you and has to help support you in being able to serve the residents. That's really how we see our job.
And I think, I think John hit on this too. A lot of the town council work, you don't, you know, like John said, I'm not like, yeah, there'd be months that I don't go to East Bridgewater. We have, we sometimes, especially with the sewer line and other, some of the other things that I, you know, kind of mentioned, but yeah, we'll do Zoom meetings. If they want, if Charlie says, or, you know, whoever, DPW says, I want you there, of course I'm there. But, you know, a lot of, a lot of that kind of work can be, you know, you know, public records or, you know, general stuff can be done over email or the phone, and a lot of these meetings can be, you know, are fine, you know, it's a little bit different than the labor employment where, you know, sometimes you do want to be face-to-face. But, but yeah, a lot of that, you know, can be done via Zoom. And again, we take, you know, our cues from, from you all as to what you're, you know, what you feel you need us for and whether you need us to be in person or not.
I don't want to monopolize on you, I'm just trying to have one, but...
Well, I was just going to ask, you know, based on your prior experience, when you take on a town, are there any difficulties you experience in taking on a town, any growing pains from, you know, what they're used to versus what we're seeing now? Any common threads there that you can elaborate on? If not, that's okay. I'm just wondering if you see any commonalities between when people switch over?
Yeah.
Hey, this is how we used to do it?
Yeah.
Like anything like that you want to touch on?
So I think it's really important, and this is how we kind of try to help guide you with, like, any organizational or operational change. We have a very low and slow approach. So we understand that people don't like change, and we know that as, when we're getting hired, we are changed, right? So we really do try to go very low and slow in terms of gaining trust and also confidence, and we try to do that as, as, you know, to the degree that we can through trainings, through face-to-face meetings, through making sure that we are kind of getting out there and meeting folks and being respectful. And that's the other thing, too. We're always going to take an approach that's trying to be respectful for what's been done, but also guide you towards those best practices, because there are best practices, and they're best practices for a reason, and that's our job, is to try to help align you with the best practices to cut down on your litigation and to cut down on the issues that you have to call us, because we understand all of these municipalities are dealing with the same issues. You're strapped in terms of your budget. We're not Google or Amazon. There's not unlimited funds for you to utilize for your operation. So we're constantly having to make sure that we're meeting those challenges and to help you address those challenges. But we work, I always say this, we play, we always play very nice in the sandbox with everybody, because again, we're always new kids on the scene. So every single time, we're going to have to develop those relationships and really going to have to make sure that we're communicating in a way that's very respectful of what's been done, but to try to gain access and come into alignment with what the best practices are.
To the degree there's ongoing litigation, that's really up to you.
Yeah.
If you think it makes the most sense for your current firm to continue on a certain case, that's fine. And I'll be honest, and as Jamie said, you know, we've, we've done this a number of times, we've never run into a contentious situation where there was a fight between the two firms or whatever. I mean, look, every, you know, everybody wants the business, everybody wants to hang on to it, but at the end of the day, the people that work in our field, they're all pros, they understand the nature of it. And the transitions aren't really painful, they're not that difficult. On the client side, whatever apprehension people have is generally overcome by the fact that we really are so accessible that they can really get in touch with us and work through their issues quickly.
Just a random kind of, I guess, not minutia question, but with your firm, are you guys strictly, you know, I think something important to me is I would, I like a firm that specializes in municipal. Do you guys have civil stuff as well, or what's your, what's your breakdown?
So we, the majority of our work is civil litigation. We do a lot of workplace, our private sector work is, we do, we have a lot of nonprofit organizations for labor and employment that we advise on and that we assist with, and then we do do a lot of workplace investigations in our private sector. But we don't have, you know, we're not in-house council for, you know, for any, like, if the majority is municipal, those non-municipal are strictly labor and employment specific.
Gotcha.
And we're special council in a lot of places. That's how we usually, a lot of the times we get hired as special council, and then kind of, you know, it grows, our area grows. But we do have non-municipal clients.
Okay. And then just a follow-up, I guess, so we have all your cell phone numbers and so forth, but our point person would be Chris or?
Chris will be the point person for, for the land use.
For land use?
Yeah, okay. Well, but one of the things that we know makes, really frustrates people is not being able to get in touch with somebody when you need them. We really share information internally to a fault, so that if Chris isn't available, you can call me. Jamie's not available, you can call me. Somebody's available to answer your question.
And somebody will get back to you. That's the biggest thing that we, I'm always like, if you don't hear back from me in 24 hours, you better call the police chief, because something happened, you know? I mean, to a fault, I make sure that I get back to people, just because I never want someone to say, I couldn't get in touch with you and made this decision, and I wanted to talk through it, and I couldn't do that, and I had to make a decision. You know, so we understand that this is a 24/7 operation, more than anyone. I mean, there are often mornings where it's like, it starts at 6:00 AM when the DPW, you know, DPW starts, you know, heading to, to the yard at 6:00 AM, and we get calls and emails and text messages at 6:00 AM, and the nights as well. I mean, this is what we do for a living. Our government operations are 24/7, so we have to be 24/7 to a degree.
And you have the capacity to take us on. I know you said you're selective, but you have the capacity.
Yes.
You're not stretching thin. This is not something that we're taking a chance on. Capacity is well within belief.
Okay.
So one of the questions I had, just kind of follow up on that, is if you're town council now only for East Bridgewater and Rockland, why do you want to add us? You're very selective. Are we that special?
Yes, we are.
Or are we that easy to, to buffalo or what?
Well, number one, you're here in the South Shore, all right? Number two, it was a pretty limited engagement. I did work with Mr. Seelig. I did work with Mr. Sealy before and, you know, I, I do, having lived in East Bridgewater for many years, we're familiar with the town. But building that general town council capacity was a big thing internally. When we started, um, the general town council experience was me, all right? Because it, it can only be acquired over the course of time. And now Chris has been doing it for 10 years. David in our office does a lot of the public records and procurement stuff. It's just work that you can only, you know, knowledge you can only acquire over a long period of time. We bring in a lot of associates and bring them onto the labor and some of them have a background in that. But there are so many different areas that you, so many different questions, types of questions you ask the town council. It just takes a while to build that capacity. So that's why we've been careful. We just turned down, we just passed on another opportunity to bid for town council because candidly, we thought it was going to be way too much work. Again, especially in the spring when everybody's taxed and we just didn't want to risk it.
But what's, like, why, why us now?
It's, you know, speaking with, with Mr. Sealy and, and the town administrator, it doesn't seem like this, you know, you guys aren't going to want us here three nights a week.
Every day, all day, it's, it's, that's the other, you know, the other issue for us is that.
But we do, we do manage to get into plenty of jams, I'm sure you're aware of that.
Hey, everyone, you're not alone.
Why do you think they're here?
You're not alone.
So when you say you turned down opportunities, there's opportunities like this to appear, to interview quote unquote for an opportunity? That's what you're denying?
Of cour-, yeah, we often get approached to do, I mean, it happens a lot.
And you decline the opportunity for it to fit for whatever reason?
It's not a fit, yeah.
There's, there's some bigger communities that have really major development issues that would require a lot of time and attention. And we try to be really realistic about, you know, what can we really, really handle? It's easy to say, let's take them on, let's take everybody we can get. But, um, you know, I, I, I'm trying to be careful how I said, say this, but, um, well, I'll, I'll come right out and say this, in Rockland, when I started the practice in 2007, I was the interim town administrator there. They hired me, you know, that's how I was making ends meet. And their town meeting, I was working with the town to get ready for town meeting. And they had a big municipal firm who had a partner that was assigned to them all the time. And when their annual town meeting came, they sent somebody else who wasn't familiar with the town, wasn't familiar with the issues. And they asked me to put in a bid for town council. So, you know, that's something that resonates with me. We've been at town meetings in, in Rockland, in East Bridgewater, and even some other towns, those rare occasions when they need labor council, and the firm sends somebody else. They're not sending the lawyer who's been at your town meeting 10 years in a row. That's an issue, that's an issue, so, yeah.
Most, most of what I hear is a lot of what your practice is, is, is labor, or at least that on your end of it. But on the, um, the general government side, uh, like town, somebody at town meeting, you, who, who, which of you or how do you handle that with us?
Would not be me, John, I'll tell you that right now, if you want to, he's lovely gentleman right here.
Well, the only reason I ask, the reason I say that is because again, you know, we end up with, we end up with issues in, in the middle of a town meeting that can, uh, derail, uh, efficiency. And so a lot of times, uh, we do need a lawyer to, to say something. Not necessarily the correct thing frankly, but at least say something to get things back on track and then worry about it later, so.
Chris has been going, um, on the land use stuff to East Bridgewater's town meeting for a long time. And he's, he's been through all town meetings, but, um, I haven't missed, I've missed one town meeting in Rockland, all right? But I've never missed any in East Bridgewater, all right? Because I'm their general town council. You, you guys are going to be well served by having Chris at your town meeting. I think your town meeting is the same night as either Rockland or East Bridgewater.
Yeah, one of the communities, the second.
Second Monday. East Bridgewater, I think is the first and Rockland's the second. So when I say we're selective, I wouldn't take a town on, you know, unless we, we're sure that we could send somebody who's going to be, you know, town meeting and a lot of people don't think, appreciate it. Town meetings governed a lot more by custom, local custom than law. And having the same attorney there has tremendous value, it really does. And, and that's really what we've brought to East Bridgewater, that's what we've brought to Rockland. You know, that's, that's what you want, someone who's there all the time. You know, you have to understand custom, you have to understand the personalities, you have to understand really just how the town operates. And, and, and I think that's really going to be critical.
But I'll also say this, John, because I think we do a lot of work in preparation for town meeting. We do a lot of prep work with people to get them ready and fully confident. And we, you oftentimes can anticipate where it's going to go. You know, I'm, I'm not a town council, but I've been at many, many town meetings at this point in my career. So, I mean, you can kind of, we do a lot of advanced work with people to make sure that we have a strategy and approach. And we really assist with like messaging and talking points where if we know that there's going to be an issue to the degree that we can get ahead of issues and making sure that people have the right information and correct information. And again, to your point, getting things back on track, point of order. Town council will give an opinion, worry about it later, you know? I think that is really important to be able to move things along. Our towns that we are town council in, we don't have these 10, 12 marathon nights that we do. Because generally, we, we do a lot of prep work ahead of time and, and usually they're running pretty smoothly. So I think that's part of our approach as well, just because, you know, I, I have seen where you can tell the folks weren't prepped.
Just to change the subject, I got one other point I wanted to add, make sure I asked, and that is, um, so you mentioned on your, your, uh, training of, of our people. One of the things that, um, we are trying to do is to make sure our volunteer boards are, uh, at least educated to a certain competency level in their own specialties. And, and generally speaking, speaking, the ones we're talking about would be like conservation, uh, zoning, um, that type of thing. And so I know you talked about open meeting and public records, that's all well and good. I think we're pretty good with that, although like you say, new people come in, they don't really understand that. But I think where we really need a lot of work is, is some sort of a program in those veins. Can you help us with that?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I mean, you know, I'm sort of versed with the zoning act, uh, Hoyer and the protections act. So yeah, absolutely, we can sit down with the boards and go over, you know, kind of their, uh, responsibilities and, you know, make sure they understand the law. And yeah, we've certainly done that in the past with, uh, with some of the other boards as well.
And we develop specialized trainings on all different subjects. So as you can imagine, to your point, like, one of our jobs is training. That's, we have a lot, a lot of training that we do in our office. And we develop trainings in a very specific way that's supposed to be engaging and also to be, to be able to hold people's attention in a training. Nobody just wants to look at a slide deck, go up. So really part of our job as trainers is to make sure that we're meeting people where they are and also being able to help them understand the, like, the concepts. And it's almost like learning a new subject in school where you have to sometimes spiral the approach and sometimes come back and come back around again and come back around again. And so we're really strong in our trainings. Um, we get hired to, to train, you know, lots of different organizations, lots of different, um, types of, of issues. So, and we, we help develop those trainings with you. So if there's an area of concern or unclear that we want, that you really want to kind of put a point on, we're happy to help you with that. And we really want to make it engaging for people so that they don't just, again, they can show up to the training, but whether or not they get anything out of the training is a separate question.
So is that, um, if we did the flat fee, uh, here, is that part of that flat fee or is that something extra?
And when we, you know, when you talk about board specific training, like when you're planning board or ZBA has, you know, very specific procedural questions. I mean, this is really, I think Chris's strength, you know, he's not going to say it, but going in and working in a very collaborative manner with the boards going in there. But even more importantly, we onboard new members, sitting down with new members. Look, he, you know, it's, it's worth an hour or two to sit down with them and say, you know, here's, here's how, you know, here's the limitations of your job, we'll talk about indemnification, here's, here's what you do. I mean, uh, you know, someone said to me a long time ago, a lot of people run for planning board because they weren't happy about a subdivision up near them. So, you know, there's a lack of understanding coming in. So we can do the onboarding, but I think, you know, we, we're always mindful of the fact they're volunteers. And people on these boards put in a ton of time for no compensation and not much thanks either. But they can call us or email us if they have questions. Being able to call or email Chris and say, this project's coming up tonight, what about that? What about this aspect of it? And getting an answer or having a phone call, it, it saves everybody.
And that would all fall within our flat fee?
Yes.
Type of thing. Because that's an issue that, uh, existed for a while was, uh, members of various boards, um, deciding that they wanted to just make direct contact with, with, with council, right? And, uh, of course, it makes our legal budget go off, off the rails. So we, we changed it, Jonathan and I changed it and said, no, it all has to come through us first. And so we wanted to control, because we wanted to control it.
Right.
But that, so that I think that aspect, like you say, that, that would be worthwhile. I also, what we've also tried to do or trying to do is on these volunteer boards especially, we can't control the planning board, but we can offer them, right? But at least on the volunteer ones, we're making it a, a, a requirement of their appointment that they do complete a certain amount of training to get at least. And we, and I think in, in the beginning, I'll probably do it to everybody just to get everybody on the same page. And after that, we'd probably do, like if you say, if there's a new appointment, okay, you're a new appointment, even though you may know something or you may have been on or whatever, you're going to talk to these folks and make sure they're up to date. And we, and, and it's important to us as we see it now that not only does it, um, make the public better served, but it also is a, uh, better serves our volunteers. So I mean, we're, right now, we're kind of putting them out there, say, okay, you're on the conservation commission, knock yourself out, right? And then you think, well, what does that mean? Am I supposed to not allow trees to be cut down, you know, is this to do with water? What are we conserving, right? Even though that's nothing to do with it. So that's the kind of thing that we really do need. And it would be helpful to be able to have our town council, uh, kind of set up a program for, I can only think of those couple of regulatory boards, but I'm sure there's other ones.
But I will say that, I, I, and I don't mean to toot anyone's, uh, horn, but like, places where we're not even town council, they ask us to do the boards and committee trainings. Because I do think that we're so adept at being able to train because that's such a large majority of what we do as an organization and focus on training. And like, I'll, I'm thinking of two or three right off the top of my head, where we're not town council, but we're doing the boards and committee trainings, we're doing the open meeting law trainings, we're doing all of those trainings about, you know, how to interact and intersect with employees and those issues that we do town-wide for all boards. We, we're not even town council there, we do trainings there. Because we're so effective at, in my opinion, we're so effective at training that one person goes to a training and then they want us to come back and kind of, it grows from there. So, um, I will say that, we really do, we do a lot of training, we love to train, so.
And that training's a good example when we say, you know, there's, there's legal advice and then there's practical advice. One of the things we do with the board and committee training is, you know, here's best practices for managing a meeting. When does the public have the opportunity to speak? When do they not have the opportunity to speak? You know, and, and really, what do you do if things get heated in a meeting? You know, every time I do one of these trainings, I, I always joke, here's the thing you never do. You never call the police and have them pull somebody out, never, ever do that. And there are people that say you can't do that legally and it's like, if there's a worse idea, I don't know what it is. But we give them practical advice, like, you know what? If things are getting heated even among the board members, what's adjourned for five minutes? What's everybody go out in the hall, cool off and come back in and see if we can deal with it?
And those de-escalation techniques, those are things that we train on the employment side of the house that we then bring those de-escalation trainings to your board and committee trainings. Because that same de-escalation technique that you learn with employees and with police and fire and with anyone that's dealing with high conflict situations, they're the same de-escalation techniques that we employ in a different way to help serve you. So that's the piece where you can pivot a piece of information that might be an employment specific piece of information that actually helps everybody. Because understanding how to de-escalate is half the battle of actually doing de-escalation.
Anybody else have any other comments, questions?
I have one, uh, just walk us through your, your typical prep for a town meeting for either Rockland or East Bridgewater. How, how often are you meeting before that? Are you, are you having, you know, training sessions with moderators? Are, you know, how, what's the, what's the protocol? Probably different for each town.
We, we work with, closely with the moderators. Most people become moderators because they have a pretty strong sense of how they think town meetings should go. But we start off by, we really encourage in Rockland and East Bridgewater to do a good job of putting out a schedule ahead of time that the board endorses. This is when articles are due, all right? This is when the budgets have to be done and all those things. We want to see draft warrants as soon as possible. Chris has done a lot of the warrants. We flag issues, all right? This is going to be controversial, you know, have we really walked through and thought? You know, we're obviously reviewing it to make sure that it makes sense legally. We put a lot of time and effort into the warrant explanations, the article explanations so that they're clear. And it's really just to minimize the questions, the controversies at town meeting. And, you know, if, if we also do, so we'll talk to the town administrator. It's usually the town administrator, the finance people going through the specifics of the warrant. When you get close to the town meeting, we'll have a meeting with the moderator to talk about, you know, what he or she, what he expects to go, what, you know, what we expect to be controversial. What are the things that we want to bring to his attention that we probably can expect questions on? And we get a lot of that feedback from, from the town administrator too. But it's really just going into the meeting as prepared as possible. The, you know, the thing I, I learned in almost 30 years of this, the worst answer you can give a town meeting is, I don't know. So, you know, it's just being prepped, knowing what the issues are, having everything tight, having all the budget issues locked down as quickly as, as soon as you can.
And identifying scope issues is half the battle.
Right.
Scope issues are half the battle at town meeting. Keeping it on track and once again, like, when, and that's a deflection technique too, right? Like the same thing, when a conversation goes on track, how to get that conversation back on track and within the scope of whatever the discussion should be. To have a really good civil discussion, even when people disagree, we want to have them be respectful in communicating their disagreements and really keep it within the scope. Because that's half of the battle at town meeting, is that it, you'll start to see a turn. We've all seen it, right? We start to see it go off the rails and being able to help guide folks back to what is the scope and what this means in terms of the vote that they're voting on.
And, and if some, if a scope issue comes up, you know, and we have to rule that this proposed amendment is beyond the scope, we explain why, we don't just give credence. Look, these people are all volunteering their time to come to, so we're always respectful of, of that fact.
Okay, um.
One last one. And I, and this I know I'm kind of throwing out in your last minute, and if you guys don't have an answer now and want to get back to us, if, if the practice would ever consider, I don't want to say à la carte, but, uh, let's say we wanted to go, um, general council but have labor with another practice. I mean, are you guys flexible as far as what entity, what role you guys would be filling for the town? Again, maybe I don't want to put you on the spot there.
Yeah, absolutely not, but we're late, I mean, again, if you went in a different direction for either of them, we're happy to do whatever is of service to this town. We're happy to work with you guys in the capacity that you want us to work with you. And we're happy to assist in those ways. But I will say that, you know, for the town council work, being here and being on the South Shore and being available and accessible is very, from what I can tell, and again, I, I work in all these different towns and I hear feedback about lots of different town councils, as you can imagine. When you're labor council, you're hearing a lot of feedback from all of the firms. I can say that the folks in our firm are so responsive and really do such a great job with the town council work. And that's because we're very selective. So I, I will just say that in terms of like, bigger isn't always better for town council. And I can, I, from my experience, that's been my, my view, um, so.
And I would call your counterparts in Rockland and East Bridgewater. That's the best advice I can give you.
Okay, uh, we'll give you the last word, anything you want to add that we haven't talked about, not asking for it, but.
I never thought we'd fill 51 minutes, I'm like, wow. I'm like, wow. I'm like, hey, yeah. Thank you. This is an important decision, so.
This is an available hour.
No. But I think it's important, I think it's important that we did take as much time as we needed.
Yeah, no, it's fantastic.
We're going to look for follow-up.
We appreciate your time.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So, we're still making up our minds, and we'll, we will certainly get back to you as soon as we do.
Of course.
Any other questions? Don't hesitate to ask.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Chris, thank you.
Always a pleasure.
Thanks, sir.
Why don't we take a adjournment for five minutes?
Five-minute recess or until seven o'clock? Yeah. Thanks, guys.
Can come back into public session. We're reading with MTC Mead, Talerman, and Costa LLC. And so, if it's all right with you, we'd just like to open the floor to you folks first. Tell us about yourselves and why you want to be town council in Halifax, and then the board will ask some questions.
Sure. So, Jay Talerman, Kate Federoff, and Liz Leiden with me. A little bit about us. So, we've been around doing municipal stuff since about 2004. I was a partner at KP Law, and I joined with Lisa Mead and another partner at the time named Mark Babrowski to do a lot of land use work, but pretty quickly, we decided that to throw our hand in with some general municipal stuff. And we wanted to do it in a slightly different way. Lisa was a former three-term mayor up in Newburyport, and so she was used to having in-house city solicitor work. And as a former partner at KP Law and a town official in my own town of Norfolk, just thought there was a better way to do it. Now, we take, you know, no umbrage with the way anyone else does it. We're, but traditional legal services are, "Call us when you have an issue, and we'll answer it." What we wanted to do was create a system where we were part of your team, if you wanted someone who'd be part of your team, and find a way to do that without breaking the bank, which can be sometimes difficult, because if you pick up the phone a lot and call council, then the bills go up. So, we developed a number of different fee proposals, some of which are in your package, and just our general overall approach, to problem solve before real problems arise. Litigation is the biggest driver of legal services. One case for a relatively small legal budget like your own could really kill you by, like, December. So, we tried to figure out a way, whether you go with an hourly package or with one of our flat fee arrangements, to do some of this in a way that won't break the bank. Some of that is through the flat fee work, but some of it also is working with your boards, helping you train them, issue spot, doing site visits, doing whatever we can to get to know you and for you all to have a relationship with us, so we can problem solve, avoid problems. In every town that we, where we've used a flat fee arrangement, just everything's all in, the litigation, some exceptions to it, but mostly everything's in, where our competitors said, "They're going to kill you if you do this." In every single one of those towns, litigation has gone down demonstrably in every single one of those towns. And for us personally, when that happens, we don't spend as much time either, so we find a way to grow our firm, grow our team, be more productive, all at the same time, giving you the advice you need to do what you need to do. Now, the other benefit of doing something like that, too, is that when something happens where you really have to fight, whether it's a tricky labor issue that Kate's handling, a tricky contract dispute that Liz might be handling, we give you the confidence and the wiggle room in your budget by doing this and taking care of this, so you can fight without worried, being worried again about breaking the bank. So, it's just kind of worked for us, and as we've grown, we've kind of developed other bits of expertise that come along the way, but we're now 30-something towns deep. Our clients seem to like it. I'll let Kate offer a few words. Kate joined us, oh, gosh, now seven, eight years ago.
Something like that.
And is a partner with the firm.
Yes. So, I, prior to joining this firm, I worked for the City of Brockton. I was in-house counsel in the solicitor's office. I was the senior assistant solicitor, and I managed really that department. And in Brockton, we're self-insured, so we handle everything from someone slipping and falling to civil rights claims, to negotiating union contracts, to big IMAs, right? So, and we handled that soup to nuts in my office. And I was very, very happy there. I loved working for the City of Brockton. I still do work for the City of Brockton. And Jay cold called me. And he said, "Would you like to join our firm?" And I said, "No, absolutely not. I'm really happy." But I, despite my reservations, met him for a cup of coffee, and he told me about the firm, just like he told you. And the thing that was attractive to me was that in Brockton, I really was part of the fabric of the city hall, right? So, people, my day would be mapped out in my mind, and then inevitably at 8:35, someone would run down and say, "Okay, your day is changing," right? So, you'd go up and run to a meeting, or you'd go up and deal with an employee issue. But everyone knew to come to me, I wasn't the lawyer, I was Kate, you know? And so, when Jay described that to me about the practice, it really felt very familiar. And so, I did join the firm. And I realized, after working there for several years, that it wasn't, you know, just lip service. That's really how it is. So, we forge these relationships with our clients so that we aren't the lawyers coming in and everyone's afraid of. Sometimes they're afraid, but not always. And, you know, they trust you, they can call you up. They text me. I get a text at 11 o'clock at night, and it's like, "What do you think of this?" And I respond back, because it doesn't have to be as formal as, sometimes it evolves that way when you have an outside firm, right? So, part, one of the ways we try to build these relationships is through office hours, where we come in and we sit with staff and we say, "What are you dealing with?" They bring you a list of issues. We talk through those issues. We issue spot, trying to thwart, you know, bad decisions, which is really important also on the employment side. Please don't call me the day of the hearing and say, "By the way, we're firing this person." I want to know when you're starting to have problems, because I'll map out for you what's the best way to either solve this problem by making the employee a better employee or solve this problem by starting documentation and starting progressive discipline and doing all of those things, so that when you do get to the end, you're successful, right? And that applies on both the general municipal side as well as the labor side. So, you know, with that, what I'd say is that I think it would be really helpful for you to call our clients, because despite the fact that we're growing, and we're growing pretty, pretty quickly, we've taken on new lawyers to, you know, help us with our clients, but our, our clients haven't suffered for that. I think they've benefited from that, because as we expand, we get more lawyers and we get more collaborative input and a better product.
And we're not the kind of, I mean, a traditional law firm structure would be us hiring a bunch of really young people and tossing them at you and then trying to, because we got a bigger gap there. It doesn't work like that. So, when we bring on Kate, we bring in someone who's like turnkey, partner level. We bring in someone like Liz, who's got 10 years of experience doing contracts, land use, and other kinds of important things for the City of New Bedford. So, again, we add, when we add to the group, we're adding folks that can operate at that leadership level. So, you know, these are huge additions for us to get someone like, on day one, I think Liz was handling half of our procurement and contracting load, and now our entire cannabis practice runs through Liz's office. So, when we, when we grow, we grow on, up from the top, and we try and make sure that no one's left behind or given someone, not that we don't have slightly younger associates here and there, but they're not covering your town meeting.
Right. Right.
Okay. Questions? But speaking of town meeting, what's your, what's your general prep for a town meeting? How do you handle it? Do you foresee being Halifax's town meeting representative if we were to go with MTC?
So, I'm the moderator in my town.
You're the former one here, too?
Okay. So, I have two city gals here, so, you know, they've learned town meeting, but they both cover a ton of town meetings. So, we handle that in the same kind of collaborative way that we would handle anything. We want to see your warrant early. We want to work with you through the year on drafting things. So, again, examples, like Liz is on top of like your cannabis, if you have a cannabis bylaw, or you're working on some kind of initiative there. If there's, Liz also is one of our leading folks on the new MBTA zoning, so she's, you know, we're working constantly throughout the year. Now, any number of us could handle your town meeting, and there's always scheduling issues in the spring, but what we try and do is make sure that we're choosing someone who is part of your leadership team. So, Kate is the primary contact that we've designated here. All right. Ideally, it would be Kate who's covering your town meeting. Liz covers town meetings, too. I cover town meetings. Any of us that are active in your general municipal side can cover your town meeting. That's our goal. Our goal is always to have the primary contact cover. Obviously, things happen. Everyone wants a town meeting in May, but we try and identify these things early, make sure your schedule syncs with our schedule, and then we start. But we don't view it as, "Hey, if you have a May 14th town meeting, give me your warrant on May 1st."
Sure.
We're working on that warrant. We're helping you with budgetary questions on your, that are going to come up on the warrant early. We want to be involved in those discussions months before that.
And I think it's important to note that it, part of town meeting prep depends upon you all and what you would want and what your needs are. So, there have been times where one of my, one of my towns, a town administrator, wasn't around for a town meeting, and so I had to draft the first draft of the warrant. So, I started with, you know, prior fiscal year bills and then moved down to the budget and did all of the warrant articles that I was aware of. But it could be, I have another town where I made an edit and it was like, I don't know, a typo, one typo in the whole warrant, because the thing was beautiful. You know, it was no problem. So, the level of our input depends upon you and what your needs are. Similarly, there are some town meetings where I say, "Nothing. I don't get a single question." And there are other town meetings where they get a question, and they're like, "Kate, up to the podium." I go up and talk. I was at one town meeting where I talked for an hour and a half, just getting fed, it was a representative town meeting, getting fed questions, questions, questions. And, you know, so for an hour and a half, I just took questions. So, the range is huge, but the one thing about being part of the team and having office hours and talking to staff is that when we get to a town meeting, we have a lot of the history about a lot of these warrant articles. We know why a certain bylaw is being implemented or proposed or whatever, because we, we know the ins and outs, because we haven't sat on the sidelines and not spoken with you for the past six months, and then we show up suddenly on May 22nd or whenever it is and say, "Here I am. What does your warrant look like?" So, that's another aspect.
Just a small logistic thing, Kate. How many town meetings do you do? And do you, do you have a conflict the second Monday of May?
So, I think.
Kind of off the top.
When we looked on, when you and I spoke, I think I was free the night of this, but we might have been looking at the special, or did I look at the May?
I think it was the annual.
Yeah. So, typically, so around here, I go to Kingston. I'm typically the lawyer in Kingston and Hanson. I go to Rehoboth, and then sometimes I cover up north and out west, but we do work it out.
Yeah. I think, I think especially in the first couple years, we would want to make sure that the person you're most familiar with there is at town meeting. I'm not going to say that there won't be a time when one of us that might otherwise do your town meeting might not get pulled away. What we try and do is identify that months ahead of time. The select board does have mechanisms to change the date on your own, notwithstanding a bylaw or charter provision. So, if you had your heart set on a single person, then we can work with you. But what we try and do is, by November or so, say, "Hey, here's our, where our team's going to be, and here's our priorities. What do you think you have coming up?" If you said, "We've got $125 million debt exclusion and an override and the most complicated bylaw we've ever had, we're going to make sure you're going to get the person that's the most familiar." If someone says, "Hey, there's a special town meeting coming up. It's a sleeper. It's just a couple of adjustments, and there's a conflict elsewhere," then we'll work with you on that. You know, that's one of the problems of getting a little bit bigger, is just trying to make sure you get everyone that you want. But that's why we're trying to, right here, we're trying to make sure you have a three-person team that's going to be very familiar.
But I will say, sometimes you get the benefit of maybe two of us, because you have one of us working on a bylaw that's really important and it's on the warrant, and then you have the one who's running the show, so.
Yeah. Often times that's.
I mean, I was going to touch on, you know, the fact, you have the capacity to take on a new client like Halifax, and if so, why Halifax? But I think you've kind of touched on the first part of that. Seems like you have the capacity. You do a lot of, a lot of other municipalities around here, Hanson and so forth. I guess my question is twofold. So, you have the capacity, why Halifax? And number two is, when you onboard a new town, like we're proposing here as a possibility, any specific challenges you see, you know, time after time? Is it pretty seamless? Are there frustrations here? Are there challenges there? What sort of roadblocks might we encounter?
So, let me.
Whether it's you or somebody else.
Yeah. So, I think the why is, it's actually an interesting question, because we've seen some growth and we've grown with it, but we've actually had some soul-searching within the firm, is what kind of town council do we want to be? What is the town profile that suits us the best, where we can be that counselor? So, we've taken on some bigger communities and even two small cities. We are, this is our sweet spot, in communities of any, anywhere between like 7,500 and 15,000 to 20,000, is like something where we can swoop in and really, we understand the structure, the staff needs generally, and we can really be at our, at our best. Obviously, we can handle a community that's even smaller. We represent Alfred in the Berkshires and much bigger. We represent Haverhill and Fitchburg. But this is a sweet spot. We also represent, and I think we mentioned this in, either when we spoke to Jonathan and Cody or otherwise, we represent a lot of towns in this area. We like this area. We understand the issues in this area. It's a good fit for us. We think it would be a good fit for you. We obviously represent and know some of the regional issues, because we've got Hanson on one side and Kingston on the other. So, that's the why. On transition, we've done it a few times now. We've done it with most of the folks that have otherwise represented towns. The, with electronic communication, it's gotten a lot easier. It used to be boxed in boxes. Your outgoing council, if you chose us, is duty-bound to give you a summary and give us a summary of all pending matters. There may be some matters that you want them to keep. There may be some matters that you want to come to us. So, we do two things. We do all that file review. And then, what we do, whether you do it hourly or, which we wouldn't charge for, or through the flat fee, we'll come and meet your department heads. We'll spend a half a day here and just bring everyone in a room, whether it's your two chiefs, your DPW, your building commissioner, if someone's working on planning with you, all of that stuff, obviously Cody's entire staff. So, we try and meet with folks, get to know them, and help with the transition there. We are somewhat of a known quantity, especially on the land use side, so we think we can get up to speed pretty quickly on all those things. And we've had a pretty good success rate, not, you know, I mean, there's been some bumps in the road with a, with a jilted former town council, I suppose, but most of the time it's gone really smoothly.
And we're a small bar, municipal lawyers, right? And so, I think those disgruntled former town councils are few and far between. Because we all know each other. When we were in the parking lot, we gave hugs and kisses, you know?
It's not some style that I saw.
A little bit stabbing, too, but no. But the transition generally has been really, really good. And to Jay's point, one of the things, I recently took over a town, oh, I don't know, I want to say six months ago, and they had a piece of litigation, a single piece of litigation left, and it was six years old, right? So, the prior town council had really gotten his claws into it. And I said, "I can take it, you know? I've done that before." And I said, I can take it, you know, I've done that before. And, you know, you have to get up to speed and get up to speed quickly, or you can leave it with them. And he and I have been speaking routinely about what that case looks like, what the potential other impacts are on this other piece of property, all of those things. It was very smooth, no problem. Yeah.
One of the things that we're trying to do here is to get our, especially our volunteer boards educated. We think that, we, we sort of changed our policy a little bit. Now we're requiring anybody that we appoint to take at least a minimum amount of education in their specific area. So the things that come to mind generally would be conservation, zoning, you know, those things that are very highly technical, legal issues and so on and so forth. And we're trying to put together some sort of a program for that. It's new to us. We haven't done it yet, so we're still working on it. So that's something you folks could help us with.
Absolutely.
Yeah, a million percent, yeah.
Even this, this other town that I was telling you about, same kind of idea. They had various land use boards that had been on the board for a long time, but maybe weren't as familiar as they should be with the law. So we're doing special, it's actually Ryan Winner from my office who's doing that training. And he's a teacher at-
He and I both, yeah.
Yeah, he and Jay both are teachers at Suffolk for the Town Administrators Program. And he specializes in land use like Jay. And he's doing a training on forty A, what that means, what do your hearing, even simple things like, how do you conduct a public hearing, right? That doesn't come to you naturally. You have to learn through either observation or training, right? So how do you conduct a public hearing? What does a variance mean? What does a special permit mean? What's the standard, right? And it's not because you're friendly with the guy whose application it is, right? So all of those things. But more broadly, we and I do open meeting law trainings, public records trainings for your staff. We do discrimination trainings, sexual harassment, those kinds of things. So the more you educate your boards, staff, all of that stuff, again, avoids problems on the back end because they know what to do. Or at least they know to call, right?
Right. So along those lines, so is your, when you talk about training, is this something that you have like a curriculum type thing set for?
Yeah, so it depends what it is. So like for open meeting law, public records and ethics, we have like a training module, so to speak, a PowerPoint, and we recommend, so whether it's hourly or a flat fee, it would be, it would be no charge. And what we like to do is once a year or once every other year sometimes, is do two sessions in one day. One would be for staff and one would be for board members in the evening. And what we would do is go through our PowerPoint full presentation on open meeting law, public records and ethics is kind of a classic three-part module that we do. And we go through that and we prepare folks and we answer questions. We've done that a number of times. And then we do a repeat for folks that couldn't make it during the, the day. And we do that and we've kind of whittled it down into kind of this set of slides that hopefully doesn't, it keeps things moving, but it's still thorough and comprehensive.
How about on the, on the more specific ones like zoning board or conservation?
Yeah, so I think-
Frankly, frankly, not to interrupt, I apologize, but you know, the open meeting stuff is important. And I, I haven't seen that we've had a lot of issues on that. For the most part, because most of the time, somebody on that board's been around long enough to know, right?
Sure.
Or, or the town administrator gets involved or something like that. Where we really run into problems, I think, is having volunteers with good hearts that have been appointed to boards that are now, as opposed to maybe twenty or thirty years ago especially, extremely technical and extremely involved, like zoning, conservation, that kind of stuff. And it's un, I think it's unfair to our appointees to kind of drop them in there and say, okay, you're on your own. And it's also beneficial for the town itself just to make sure we're following all the rules. And that's the kind of, so you have curriculum for that?
Yeah, we do all of that. Now, sometimes it doesn't require a curriculum as much as it does like a, let's get around the table and talk about it kind of thing. But for zoning, for example, so that would be, could be planning board and zoning board, I actually teach all the various, I do a yearly seminar for all of the building official groups. There's a southeastern Mass one, there's a central Mass one, a north shore and a western Mass one. And I do a zoning module on, every year on like Dover Amendment, pre-existing non-conformings. What, what does it take, you know, how do you read a special permit, the new MBTA zoning, things like that, that we go through. And it's a lot of repeat stuff with the case update. And, but we can be as specific, we end as long-winded as possible with a full module. Or like, what kind of issues are you facing? Let's get in a small group and start talking about it. Invariably, with any of these, when we, we can prepare a module and a PowerPoint and have the backup, and we do, the best way to conduct these is like in a smallish room where people then say, well, this is what is happening to us. And then we can, we can understand that because we've met them already and meet them where they are and, and help with that. So it's less just preachy and teachy and more just having that conversation with them and weaving in the cases, the statutes. And it gets pretty complicated. We do things even at, for different groups on procurement issues, on the harassment issues, where we have more specific stuff, but it still works best when we get in those rooms and have those conversations.
The envision we have, and we, we've made a policy about this a couple of months ago, is that when we make your appointment, we're expecting you to be attending a certain level of education so that we know, we know for certain that you've at least been exposed to this, whatever that is. That's, that's really where we are. We're not any more further advanced than that. We have other problems, of course.
Yeah, that fits our model. That's the model. Because the better educated and the smarter and the more comfortable your groups are, your boards are with their enabling legislation, the better off the town is from a problem-solving standpoint. And from a business perspective, that front-end expenditure of resources by us ends up paying off ultimately on the back end.
And the other side of that is, we also offer, if you request an opinion from us on a zoning issue, we'll provide you either a written or informal opinion. And then to back that up, we will also review your decisions before they go to your board so that they know that the decision is sound and based on the facts.
Review the decision of the board or?
So if, if your planner, say, puts together a draft decision based on the content of the filing and the hearings that have taken place, and they send it to us for review, we'll review that decision and make sure that it's sound. And so, again, to prevent an appeal or litigation coming out of that.
Can I, well, just to dovetail on what John said. So would you envision any sort of onboarding? Is that what we're kind of talking about here? Would you guys be willing, if you wanted some folks to onboard new board and committee members just to kind of nip things in the bud before we get down the road?
Certainly.
Yeah.
The other thing too, I wanted to talk about was, we live in a Zoom world. How often are you guys actually physically in your municipalities compared to on the street?
Whatever works for you all. I mean, for a couple, few decades now, I've been getting in the car and, and doing it. There are some real benefits to the Zoom revolution where I spend a little more time at home. The downside is I might be stacking two or three of those. So yeah, whatever media you use in person, and sometimes we will recommend, even if you exist in more of a Zoom ecosphere, just like, hey, this is, we want to come out. Whatever media you want to use is fine with us. We have no recommend. That's a style question. That is not, whatever works for you. Some towns are just, and boards are stubbornly and strictly in person. Hey, it's working for you. It'll work for us. Some towns' boards haven't met face to face in now four and a half years. Then if that works, then that's okay.
Sure. But to your point, there's something to be said for sitting in a room.
Sometimes, especially like an exact session on, in Kate's world.
My world a lot, I'm exclusively on the road. So my world, there's a little bit of the intangible that you have to deal with. Labor and employment matters for sure.
Well, to dovetail on that question, I think you asked it previously or maybe separately. So your, your labor?
I, labor and general. I mean, I manage the entire, so for all of our towns that have labor and employment, and that's a good portion of them, probably-
Thirty, forty percent of them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
If we, if we kept labor separate,
Yep.
you would still be our point person-
Yes.
-as a municipality.
Yeah.
Even if we excluded labor from your scope.
Yes.
And that's no problem.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. Like I said, in Bracton and with all my towns, so in Bracton, we have huge infrastructure, right? We have IMAs with surrounding communities for water, for sewer. I deal with all that stuff. I deal with contracts. Some of them I sent to Liz. Just because they're not so exciting to me. But I deal with town meeting, finance, all of that stuff is no problem.
So Kate and I are kind of co-primary in Kingston. She's the primary in Hanson. We kind of share Rehoboth a little bit. So she's doing a ton of general work in addition. And we all have our areas of expertise, but we all are making sure that we can answer all those open meeting law things, all that municipal governance, all that municipal finance stuff, all, all of the rules and regs that you need a primary to understand.
I don't think our legal world, at least right now, involves a whole lot of labor work. I mean, that's very unusual. We don't get that many in the, at least not right now.
That's good.
Our contracts have all just been negotiated, so it's not, labor's not our, our big issue. Our bigger issue is probably zoning and land use, some general government stuff. Making sure that our town meeting runs efficiently. I would say that's really where we are right now. That, that, of course, that could change tomorrow.
That's good. I love labor management harmony.
Right, and you know, and if it is a lot of land use, you know, a little humble brag, I still don't think, and I was at KP, and I still don't think there's a better land use group in the Commonwealth than our group. Between Liz and myself and Adam and Lisa and Brian Winner, our land use group is really second to none. So if you've got zoning, conservation, planning, enforcement, any of that stuff, our, our group's like ready to go.
Similar, I'd say, Kate, I was in-house in New Bedford and I worked primarily with planning, zoning, conservation, DFFM, DPI, so Department of Public Infrastructure, building. But I was very ingrained in the land use world. And so when they, when Jay brought me over as well, that's what he hired me for and then found out I also did contracts.
She's going to hide that.
I would be doing both of those for you. But we've been on top of the ADU changes that just came down, three A bylaws, cannabis. And so we would be doing a lot of that and helping you if you need to make changes to those bylaws as well.
Our present police chief was actually a New Bedford police captain, I think.
Oh, really?
Yep. We have a connection. Any other questions from the board?
No, a quick one on percentage of municipalities that go retainer or hourly. I mean, is there, are you guys, do you majority of work on retainer or?
Majority. Some, some have chose, like they think they can manage better. It's what they're used to and they're economic, you know, kind of cautious. Like we just became town council in Foxborough and they looked at both and decided to give it a run on the hourly and they said, we'll revisit. Most of our clients have gone with one of the two flat fees. A, a few want to manage on an hourly and that's fine. They don't get any different service. They, they might look around March and April where their legal budget is a little bit more just to make sure they're in good shape. But it's the same set of services and you get the same bills. It's just you're going to get the detailed reports so you know where we're spending our time and you can evaluate where the legal services are going.
So you're saying most, most optimal proposal one or two versus three in this package?
Correct.
Has, has there ever been an instance where you've been on retainer? You set an amount and then, you know, at the end of the year, you go, oh man, we're, we're getting killed here with work. Have you, have you ever had a situation where you have to re-approach that community and say, guys, we need to?
Not in the first two years. So we, we'll, we're giving you a number and even if the bear eats us, those first two years, we'll hold it for two years and then we'll be honest with you. And you know, we have an hourly, effective hourly rate that, that we're looking at. We're also cognizant of the fact that sometimes it'll be a heavy year for legal services. So if you had like a, a big school project and then, you know, some other big to-do, a crazy bylaw or a big piece of litigation that you had to do, our effective hourly rate's going to take a, a beating that year. But everything's cyclical. And the great thing about doing this in so many towns is we average it across all of the communities we represent. So if we, when we onboarded Rochester, they were a pretty needy consumer of legal services. So the effective hourly rate for the first year and a half or so was tough for us. But we've got another town that is on a glide path where the effective hourly rate is good. So these things have a way of managing it. But we'll be really open and honest with you and we never do like big jumps either. We might say, hey, we got to push this up five hundred a month or so in, in year three.
And to be clear, we give a lot of lead time because we understand how, how far back you have to prepare.
Yeah, you'd, you'd know in October, if for the next fiscal, starting the next July one, we had to push it up a little bit. But we're confident, I looked at your past legal budgets. You know, you, you take a quick look at court dockets. I'm confident that these numbers would hold pretty well. I mean, we're pretty used to what a suburban semi-rural community is going to need in terms of legal services. So we think it's a good forecast.
Okay, we'll give you guys the last shot. If you have anything you want to tell us that you haven't talked about, it's, you've been very helpful so far, but.
No, I mean, we've had, we had a great talk earlier with Cody and Jonathan. We think, you know, that, we think we'd be a really good fit. We think regionally, we're strong in this region. We think we have a great team behind us. The New Bedford office is growing, so we give a lot of proximity there. And we're happy to throw a lot of expertise at this, at this account if you choose us.
Oh, so I was just looking at your letterhead here, but it says the office is in Millis and Newburyport. You have a Bedford one also?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, this must've been an old letterhead. It must've been the only one on my computer. So yeah, we've got, we've got four attorneys in Millis right now, four and a half, six in New Bedford and the remainder up in Newburyport.
I see. Okay. And you're probably in Bedford, I assume?
I, I'm actually in Millis, yeah, mid-Millis. And but, like I said, primarily I'm on the road, so.
And you're in Bedford?
I'm in Bedford.
All right. Yeah, the New Bedford office, we opened three years, about three years ago. And it's our fastest growing office. Our client base down there is growing. It's a great spot to-
Beautiful.
Just, just restaurant-wise. And I also, I also have a house in Dartmouth. So I'm back and forth between the Millis office and Dartmouth, so.
I go down to New Bedford just to eat. I say, I'm coming for an office visit. Where are we going to lunch?
And then it's been a three-hour lunch later.
Then I ask Jay to come to New Bedford so we can go.
You ever, ever go to All Max Diner?
No, where's that?
You've never been to All Max Diner? Oh, it's near Fall River, I'm sorry.
Oh.
How about Parra Fis? Parra Fis for pizza?
Yes.
That's good.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And if there's any follow-up questions, something you forgot?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, email us and we'll get it answered right away.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Great to meet you folks.
It was a pleasure.
Good to meet you, Kate.
Nice seeing you again. Yes, nice meeting you.
Same.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you, appreciate it. So when were you moderator?
This is a Halifax legend right here.
I started in two thousand and nine up until nine years later. And then I did your waiting for a couple of years and I got back on the board. I was on the fourth line from before that for fifteen years.
Is this a town meeting time town? Or Roberts rules or a town meeting?
Uh, well, technically, we're not. Technically Roberts rules, but in my thirty-five years here, we've never opened that book. We always took-
That's a matter-
We need to change it. We're, we're rewriting town meeting time. I'm on the editorial board for it. It's going to be so user-friendly.
Oh, really?
Really tuck something in.
It's very hel, I think it's helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. It's better than Roberts rules.
Yeah, I'm going on my fifteenth year as moderator this year, yeah.
One of the Roberts rules originated in New Bedford, so. Oh, so.
They don't apply to town meeting, oh, but.
Yeah, no, it's like reg to general.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you guys.
You have a nice night.
Appreciate it.
Uh, okay. Um, let's see, so that completes our agenda.
Yep.
Just out of curiosity, uh, has anyone checked any of the references?
Um, I have not spoken to any communities, um, Clifford and Kenny, but I have spoken to, uh, two commu, two town administrators that use Meetall and Acosta. Um, and they only have good things to say.
Okay.
Can I get, I'll reach out to Charlie Seelig and Doug Lapp.
I was just going to say, can we at least ask Charlie what do you think? Cause I-
Yeah, I'll reach out to Doug Lapp too, um, in Rockland, and I will also reach out.